At the regular council meeting on Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, at four forty in council chambers and Biazum. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaverhouse First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin, Algonquin, Inishinaq, Ojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time memorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to Rattan Silianjin. Call to order in a moment of silence. Thank you. Before we move on tonight, we're just going to take note that moving forward as we get closer to reviewing our procedure document, we're going to be moving towards what is documented. And part of that being before any matter is discussed, we are going to, I will be asking for a mover and a seconder. So moving forward, that's the way we'll do it, and we'll have it recorded at the time of the meeting rather than how we proceeded in the past. So we're going to start that moving forward. So for item number two, approval of the agenda, can I have a mover? Janice Ranger, seconder, Dolly Dykens, Madam Clerk, yes, Councilor Owens.
I've got an objection to the agendas. How does this work?
You may proceed to.
It's, I, I staffer where I am had issues with, um, part of the agenda that's presented tonight. It has left a sour case in my mouth since last meeting. Uh, procedure was not followed in the notice of recent reconsideration according to section fifty nine of our by procedure by law. This should not be on the agenda tonight. It doesn't meet the criteria. Uh, so. Yeah, that's my objection for this evening. I don't believe it should be there.
Okay. I do appreciate that. Um, can you name specifically what portion of the criteria didn't follow? It was, wasn't the fact that it wasn't.
It wasn't submitted in writing. I don't, uh,
Yeah.
It wasn't submitted in writing by the end of said meeting on July sixteenth. It was decided outside the group.
Yeah. Okay. I do appreciate that. Thank you for, for bringing that forward. I take full responsibility um, of that when the issue of reconsideration was brought forward, I did not make councillor Ranger aware that it needed to be in writing. So I take full responsibility as a presiding officer and it is um, part of my responsibilities to um, assist members of council in the matters of procedure and I did not do that properly last council meeting. So that is definitely um, something that I should have done that evening. So it is on me. Yes, councillor Dykens.
Uh, you, Madam Mayor, um, to the point, um, along the same line, um. Uh, I guess I read in the bylaws that we need two thirds majority to go for it. So when does that happen? Because you see the notices say that it's going to be just a clear majority. So I, I guess I'm confused as to when does the two thirds, um, get in.
Okay, Madam Clerk, because there's clearly some issues around the table, I'll have you speak to procedure.
Um, so the, the two thirds majority in terms of the vote would be for council to uh, lift notice if the, if a reconsideration is the will of council to go forward to this evening. Um, if council wished to deal with a matter at the meeting after it makes a decision, if it makes a decision, you would need two thirds majority of council to make a determination on whether or not you want to have the item put on the agenda this evening. That's waiving notice. Um, otherwise, there's no two thirds majority vote required.
Follow that, councillor Dykens.
So it's on the agenda, I believe, is it not?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Council is making, it has a, the, the question hasn't been called yet. There's a mover and seconder for the question this evening is to adopt the agenda as presented uh, and also to allow for a notice of reconsideration to take place. It is on the agenda already this evening because given the procedural missteps from the last meeting, I gave some latitude to the notice of reconsideration to be placed on the agenda. However, it's councils' will to determine whether or not it wants to proceed with that notice of reconsideration at this point.
And I'm going to withhold my second of the agenda. I know it would have made any difference, but I'd just like to do it.
Okay, so can I have a seconder so we can discuss the agenda? Councillor Shabell, a second. Councillor Owen.
Yeah, um, I have a problem with this too. You know, we, we keep having it shoved down our throats that, yes, we must follow procedure to these, the procedures, the policies, they must be followed. Now we're being told, well, I'm giving latitude on this one. Well, that doesn't sit well with me. Not only being told time and time and time again. At the end of the day, the elected officials make the decision. And I, uh, procedure clearly was not followed in this case. And I don't think that it's on your shoulders, Madam Mayor. Um, I think it's up to councillors to know what the procedures are. Um, firstly, I wasn't familiar with this procedure prior to it coming up. Uh, but still, that's my responsibility as councillor to be up to date with the procedures and they clearly were not followed. So I do not believe that it should be on the agenda tonight.
I accept that and I do have to take full responsibility for what occurred that evening. Um, it is no secret that I should have not chaired that evening. Something had happened in my personal life and it was my own hubris that made me believe that I can handle absolutely everything unaffected. And I had very little interest in being in the chair, even though I took it. So I was the one that threw the snowball and got it rolling in the first place. Had I allowed for open conversation, none of it would have occurred. Those bylaws would have been discussed and the questions would have been explored and none of the resulting actions um, would have occurred. So this is why I'm taking full responsibility. It is my, it was my error that caused everything afterwards to occur. So the question is now, are we willing to allow this conversation to happen tonight? Or not? And that is the will of council. We do have the motion to accept the agenda as written. We've had people know that they don't agree with it. So we can take the votes and allow the votes to um, see if we take the recommendation as written, Madam Clerk.
Okay, I'm through you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to try to give some procedural
Yeah.
um, advice. Um, nothing precludes council from amending this question as presented to you on the agenda. Um, however, if council decides to take a vote and votes against uh, the question as presented, the meeting will conclude. You can't go forward in the meeting. So if there's an amendment that needs to be made to the question that's on the floor, that needs to be amended to either remove things or amend things, then that will need to take place if you want to continue having a meeting this evening.
Okay. Councillor Ranger?
Through you, uh, Mayor. Uh, I just want to make it clear that uh, we can certainly approve the meeting and when it comes to item five point one, it can be that there's no seconder and it drops or there's no majority vote and it ends there. So we can move ahead with approving this agenda. And when it comes to five point one, it can be dead in the water or an opportunity to discuss the bylaw that was um, in question. Thank you.
Councillor Shabell?
Uh, yeah, to you, Madam Chair. I think my my understanding of, just listen to everyone is uh, the way uh, this motion came about to decide generally, we have nothing against it. If you want the substance or merit of this motion, that's not, that's not what the discussion is. The discussion is that we have a procedure which in fact was not followed in this case. And people are just asking that procedure to be followed. So if we, if we're we opt to do what you're saying, is it true? We still not solving this issue? Which is that this is not supposed to be in here, period. So that's my, I don't, maybe I got it wrong from other people. But I, I do have another issue too that is if you want to, so that I want to speak to, uh, Madam Mayor, but I think I can't.
Yeah. So I respect the fact that in this case, procedure wasn't followed. I also respect the fact that we don't follow procedure very often. Why not? And so if we're going to hold ourselves to this account on this one issue, then moving forward, there's going to be, I, I believe that it's important to begin with anyway, because this one off issue just shows that all of us as a body need more education on the procedure by law. I think that's something that we'll need to um, move towards and maybe have a, a meeting that we can go over the procedure by law and, and learn better, to do things better and, and more effectively. Um, yeah, definitely I'll, I'll accept. I'll accept the, the blame on this one. Yes, councillor Owen.
I appreciate you taking the blame for this, but I don't think it's one person. It's up to one person to shoulder the responsibility on this one. Uh, it's us as councillors to know what we're putting our names to. Uh, I, I appreciate the fact that we're changing now. We'll get to a second and uh, move it on our own accord that really put a substance to it. I'm not willing to sacrifice the entire business of the municipality because we only need one someone to adjourn this summer. There's some important business that needs to be attended to. Um, I, I'm not. Yeah. I, I, the sour taste will be there regardless. It, it, that's done whatever if it needs amend the agenda, remove the thing, but I'm not willing to sacrifice the holding of this meeting today. And we've got a responsibility to the municipality and this is not something that's not going to fall my sword over this one.
Councillor Ranger?
Uh, I just also, through you, Madam Mayor, want to recognize that um, councillor, or sorry, our honourable mayor was chairing the meeting and uh, our deputy director or municipal clerk was chairing or supporting her, doesn't have the same knowledge as our actual municipal clerk who was absent. And I'm confident would have been able to provide some more supportive and clear direction to both myself and the chair, AKA the mayor. Um, if they were present, things happen. We're all human and, and make mistakes. Uh, I appreciate that it's a learning lesson, certainly for myself and for others around the table. But uh, this is how we learn. Some of us are newer than others and haven't been through these processes. So we're going to make um, maybe some changes or some, you know, policy errors, but moving forward, we'll certainly learn from them.
Thank you. Absolutely. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, through you, worship. Uh, I like councillor Owens to not believe that, uh, um, we should set aside all town business because of this issue. I do have grave concerns about discretion and when policy is followed and when policy is not followed and who decides that. Okay? Like I'm the elected person here. I'm the one that answers to the public. Okay? And I don't feel that these, anyways. My question is, is my understanding that the procedural bylaw was being worked on and I want to know when when are we going to be consulted on that and when is that work going to be completed? Because here's a perfect example of maybe the procedural bylaw was wrong or maybe it's our ignorance, whatever, a combination. I, I'm not into pointing fingers at anybody. I, I, you know, that's, that's not the issue with me. It's a discretionary thing. Um, you know, how do you decide when discretion comes with that? Um, so I would like some answers as to what's happening with the procedural bylaw. If I can ask that now, I don't know if I'm allowed to.
I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's relevant to this, to this conversation. Don't you respect my own chair? I, I don't, that's probably another, a question for another time, I would say. Uh, if I may, uh,
So, sorry. So as chair, I am going to allow that because it is part of the um, the whole reason we're having this discussion about the agenda is because of um, procedures. And I think that that is a valid um, piece to this puzzle is, um, Madam Clerk can speak to when we were requested to provide um, feedback about procedure and when that procedure is off.
Madam Mayor, through you. Excuse me. Um, earlier on in twenty twenty four, I circulated um, a request from all of council to receive feedback on the procedural bylaw. I only received um, three responses. I was waiting to receive more responses. However, I had started uh, drafting a draft procedural bylaw. I intend on bringing an education session to council on the procedural bylaw uh, as an education piece, a closed session on September third. I also intend on bringing a proposal for a procedural bylaw to council on September seventeenth.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, councillor Shabell?
Uh, Chair, I will, uh, talk to you. I will come, I will agree with moving this, uh, forward. And I accept the fact that you've taken, uh, uh, the blame. I mean, when someone is in leadership position, that's what we usually do. We take the blame. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, the last meeting was conducted very well. Uh, very well done and things happened and uh, if you express your regret about that, I think, uh, we should just move on.
Thank you. Councillor Pyle?
Yeah, uh, to, to your worship, unfortunately, I missed that meeting. So I'm not fully aware of what took place. But I agree with, uh, uh, councillor Owens, uh, that we shouldn't jeopardize this whole meeting for that reason. I'm prepared to move on with it.
Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, I'll have the reading and motion.
Certainly moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Laun Shaba. Be resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty four be approved as circulated and finally that section fifteen, the procedural bylaw fifteen seventy five as amended be suspended to allow for the hearing of a notice of reconsideration prior to petitions and delegation.
All in favor? Votes none noted. I'm in favor of unanimous. Item number three, declaration of pecuniary interest. None noted. Item number four, acceptance of minutes and recommendations. May I have a mover for item four point one, council minutes, councillor Pyle. And a secondary, councillor Owens. Madam Clerk?
Moved by councillor Pyle, seconded by councillor Owens. Be resolved that council through the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the public meeting held July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, and minutes of the regular meeting of council held July sixteen, twenty twenty four.
All in favor? Votes? I don't care, unanimous. Item number four point two, may I have a mover for committees of council minutes? Councillor Shabell, the seconder, councillor Owen. Madam Clerk?
Moved by councillor Laun Shaba, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be resolved that council adopted minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake Museum Advisory Committee held January seventeenth, twenty twenty four, and May twenty third, twenty twenty four, and minutes of the Kirkland Lake Committee of Adjustment held May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. May I have a mover for item four point three, local and regional board minutes? Janice, councillor Janice Ranger, councillor Patrick Kylie is seconder. Madam Clerk?
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. Be resolved that council received the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the District of Timiscan Lake Social Services Administration Board of Directors held July sixth, twenty one, four. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Farmers Board of Directors held April ninth, twenty twenty four, and May seventh, twenty twenty four, and minutes of the Timiscan Lake Municipal Association held May thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
All in favor? Votes none noted. I'm in favor unanimous. Item number five point one, councillor Ranger proposed open air burning bylaw. I am going to ask about uh, procedure. Do we need a seconder? Before she speaks?
Yes.
Okay. Mover is Janice Ranger, seconder. No, seconder. The matter is defeated or the matter will not be presented. Item number six, petitions and delegations. There are none this evening. Item number seven point one, supplemental, proposed zoning bylaw amendment thirty nine Second Street East. May I have a mover? Councillor Shabell, seconder councillor Dykens. Madam Clerk, I'll have you read the motion before we start discussing.
Okay, moved by councillor Laun Shaba, seconded by councillor Dolly Dykens. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty four, EDV twenty three, entitled supplemental, proposed zoning bylaw amendment thirty nine Second Street be received. Next council approve an amendment to zoning bylaw number twenty one oh thirty two to rezonance identified for thirty nine Second Street East from institutional eye to residential medium density special R two oh two. And finally, that an amended bylaw be brought forward for three readings on August thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. I will now welcome, uh, Dan Lavreter, Director of Development and Enterprise Services. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Uh, through you to the rest of council. Uh, tonight, uh, the report you have before you is the Folsom Report uh, of the zoning amendment from start to finish. Uh, tonight concludes the process. Um, I can confirm there's been no comments received through my office, the clerk's office regarding the matter. Uh, further notice, should council have no additional questions, the bylaw will be brought for three readings later this evening. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Councillor Kylie?
Just for curiosity, I'll turn to you, your worship. Just for curiosity, um, medium density, is that up to four units? Is that?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Owen?
Um, it's, uh, not so much question as comment. Um, again, I see that, uh, the use of the building changed prior to us approving the change in zoning. Now, I did talk to the director and and I understand his situation where he does not have a lot of teeth. Uh, but the law does not give him a lot of power to, uh, make people comply. But I think this is something that we need to look at and start. It's like a lot of other things in Kirkland Lake for many years. It was just allowed to happen because, you know, council's going to approve it because it's development, right? But that's not the way that it's supposed to be done. You know, what if somebody had objected? Right? And there's already four apartment units being used in there. Or as the director pointed out to me, if something should happen to that building prior to the bylaw being passed, their insurance wouldn't be valid because it wouldn't be uh, a complying use. I think that's something that people need to be informed of as well. So I know the director is on top of this. But I want the public to hear. We need to start complying with the law.
Any further comments, members of council? Yeah, like, do, do we want to, um, have the motion read again at the closing? Okay, so I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Thank you, sir. Item seven point two, supplemental, proposed housekeeping for, uh, to fireworks bylaw. Yeah, uh, mover, councillor Owens, seconder. And councillor Ranger. Uh, I'll have Earl Gray, Director of Emergency Services, Fire Chief, speaking this. Oh, sorry. Yeah, you can come up and she's going to read it.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Moved by councillor
Yeah.
Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty four, F E S four, entitled supplemental, proposed housekeeping to fireworks bylaw be received. And finally, that the fireworks bylaw as amended be brought forward for three readings on August thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, sir. You may proceed. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. Um, so after the last meeting of council, uh, there was some questions arose. Um, so we did seek legal opinion. Um, and with, uh, contacting our legal, um, partner, uh, they came back with, there is no issue that they found in the document. Um, so I brought this forward as an information session for you. Uh, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Councillor Owen?
Um, although I'm moving, um, the bylaw, I don't believe it can, I don't believe in passing it the way it is right now. I think there's, yes, the legal opinion says that it's not discrimination or whatever. It, it fine, I'll, I'll give it to the lawyers to decide that one. But in her rendering of her decisions, she says the municipal act gives council the authority to enact bylaws and a little bit around the municipal, municipal act delegates to municipal councils the authority to control fireworks. This was not written by council. Council did not have input on how this was written. I've done research in Northern Ontario, other Northern Ontario municipalities. We are by far so far the strictest municipality I could find when it comes to fireworks. According to this, traditionally, our fireworks have always been held at Civic Park. I no longer do that. Because according to the bylaw, we cannot have fireworks sent off in municipal owned land. Right?
Through you, Madam Mayor, you can still set out fireworks on municipal property. You just have to have permission. So the caveats are just permission to use the property by the owner of the property.
That's all. Yeah. So in my mind, instead of there, there's a lot of stuff in this. Instead of single, like, single out several or specific days or limit, or just limiting retailers, the ability to sell this stuff, which they already do, wouldn't it be just easier to have everybody, you want fireworks in town of Kirkland Lake? Go get a permit regardless of the date. You need a fire, a permit for a fire in your backyard and fireworks are just as dangerous, just.
Okay. Yes.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Um, unfortunately, with the fireworks, because they're so rarely available, they are very high hazard use. Um, so just to cart of launch, give everybody a permit to say, go ahead.
No, I didn't say that.
We don't want to do any.
Yeah, uh, clarification?
Yeah, I didn't say just give everybody a permit, have everybody apply for a permit. I mean, right now, anybody can go to Giant Tiger or even I went to get a gas at Max Milk yesterday. You can, you're paying, you can, hey, I want fireworks. Anybody can do it. So and even by limiting who can sell them in Kirkland Lake, nothing stops you from going to Ruwan, Larder Lake, and getting fireworks there and bringing them back to Kirkland Lake. So it, it's just, I think we need to have a better discussion about this one as committee, a whole, or system. We need more discussion. This, this, this.
Okay. Councillor Shabell?
Yeah, uh, to you, uh, Madam Mayor, um, I used to have a, a neighbor's few doors away from me. They're no longer there. And I can tell you that, um, just every day when they were there, there were always fireworks. Okay? Anytime of the day. All right? And indeed, it becomes really, uh, a problem to everybody around. Okay? And at that last meeting, when I walk, last meeting, I think the issue was that, well, maybe some ethnic group might be offended or maybe uh, their rights might be abrogated or something like that, which I really disagree with, but I do respect because if anybody, if it's part of their religion or their tradition to have fireworks, they just have to do what everybody will do, come and get a permit. And that will be it. Everybody will know that. But I think we just try to control fireworks everywhere to the detriment of neighbors. Uh, and again, just ask people, that's why this came about anyways, in my view. That's why it came here. But if we just do it every, every time of the day, anywhere, and even people that are working shift work and sleeping during the day, they would not really appreciate that. So we have to have a control mechanism in place. we have to have a control mechanism in place. Uh, if people have legitimate reasons, or they have any tradition that weren't that, of course, you can accommodate them by giving them a permit, and then, you know, we can do all this to make sure everything's in order and whatnot, but if we allow everybody to just let it, let it fly anywhere, then you're gonna have to go to all these different places to make sure everything's under control. So I, I really don't know what the issue is here because we're just trying to do uh, what I think is to me reasonable, to make sure that there's this control, everything, you know, you can't drive and speed past a certain limit. You know, there's certain control. So I'm, I'm happy with the ways this is written, and let's try it out, maybe after a year, we don't like it, people are complaining, we'll bring it back. Another motion of reconsideration, and then we can look at it and say, oh, well, we got history behind us now, let's do it better. Thank you.
Counselor Owen?
To you, your worship. Um, I have a problem with the restriction on the dates that it can be sold. I'll give you a perfect example, today's my mother-in-law's ninetieth birthday. And I have a property outside of town. So it's outside the fire department's jurisdiction, and I wanna throw her a big bash tonight. And I wanna have fireworks. And I wanna come to Kirkland Lake to buy them because Kirkland Lake's the closest place, and it's where I live full time. But if we can't buy them, like, I don't think it's up to us to determine what's being bought and sold, it's up to us to control the use in town. But it's not up to us to tell business that they can't sell it. We can tell them that they gotta sell it, how to store it and all the rest of that. But where am I gonna buy my fireworks if I can't buy them in Kirkland Lake?
She can make that?
Through you, Madam Mary, on the fire department's opinion, we would prefer you not to use fireworks, period.
Yeah.
Um, but as far as the selling and storing the fireworks, you're only allowed to store twenty five kilograms under the Explosive Act. These stores, right now, because there is no bylaw, they're unregulated.
Yeah.
So every building that has fireworks currently is a hazard to the fire department and the firefighters that go into these structures. This is a problem. So unless we can put the controls in place in the bylaw to say, this is how you're gonna store it, this is where I'm gonna allow you to sell it, and this is how we want it to be displayed. There is not one
Sorry.
that actually store property according to any of the acts currently in legislation. But we need to put this bylaw in place to actually make legislative decision to enforce.
Do you have a follow up?
Yeah, I have no objection with anything you said, in fact, I'm in a hundred percent agreement. My only objection is telling them they can only sell at a certain periods of time. Because I'm not a big fireworks guy myself. But I, I use myself as an example, because there's lots of things that happen outside of the jurisdiction. We're trying to be open to business, we're trying to encourage business, but we need to do it. I, I agree a hundred percent with all the stories and all the regulations in terms of how it's displayed and, and everything like that, I have, I a hundred percent agree with that. The only disagreement we have is over the period of sale.
Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, through your worship.
Can you, just to clarify, does the vendor, the, the store have to have a permit or license to sell?
Through you, Madam Mayor, so in our fire and emergency services bylaw we pass, so fees and charges, there is a requirement to have a permit purchase, if you're a retailer or a temporary seller. The unfortunate part is, because this bylaw hasn't passed yet, we can't enforce that fee to have them permitted. So it's still an unknown of who actually has all the fireworks.
Counselor Ranger?
I'm in favor of the bylaw as it's written.
So what I'm hearing around the table is there are specific issues with the, the wording. So as a matter of procedure, um, Madam Court, can you instruct all council as to the matter of procedure?
Certainly, through you, Madam Mayor, nothing precludes council trying to bring in for an amendment to the question on the board.
Counselor Owen?
Okay, so can we pass the bylaw as it is with the amendment? Be- be- because I share your concern, they have to be regulated, and I get that point, I have no objections to that whatsoever. I would prefer to see something where you wanna have fireworks, you need to get a permit. Plain and simple, you need a permit for a fire, you need a permit for fireworks. Oh, what happens, we pass this bylaw today, goes into effect after three readings at the end of the meeting, so all the businesses right now automatically become non-compliant?
Through you, Madam Mary, so we're gonna use the rest of this year of twenty twenty four as an information. Not to, one, we're not gonna charge the fee because we're four months left of this year, so it's not fair to the retailer. And two, it gives us a four month period to inform and provide the adequate documentation to them to do the right thing for twenty twenty five.
So, well, can I present the motion just to, or the amendment to have, you need a permit plans like to get fireworks?
Yes, at any time with the amendment, okay?
So, through you, Madam Mayor. Um, there's a bylaw as presented, sorry, I have to go back with, with the lawyer provided us, the bylaw as presented in the report at this juncture is for amendments, minor amendments to recitals. Um, if there's an amendment on the floor to make an amendment to the proposed bylaw, then there will need to be a subsequent amendment for the bylaw that is currently on the agenda as it does not have, it would not reflect that amendment. Sorry, that's very complicated, but there's another, the bylaws coming up for council's deliberation this evening.
Yes.
If there was an amendment on the floor, council to make a further, a further amendment to that bylaw, a subsequent amendment to the bylaw when we get to that point will need to be made in order for it to be the same way.
Okay.
Do I just do the amendment, ask for the amendment later on when we come to pass the bylaw then? Through you, Madam Mayor.
If you want, through Madam Mayor, if, if, if you want to make the amendment specific, you could do so now. I'm, I'm just, I was just trying to, uh, advise council that if you decide you wanna make an amendment now, you also have to make an amendment later so that it matches. I guess that's the.
Okay, that, that's for, that I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, so because there's an amendment on the floor.
I know, I need to move her in a second, I may need someone.
Yeah. Okay, so it's been moved by Counselor Owens, is there a second or for his, his amendment, which is to sorry, to permit
require permit.
require permits.
Regardless of, it's fair, it, it doesn't discriminate against religion.
So, so, sorry, so just for clarification, you, you wanna take, remove the language of like specific day?
To Victoria Day and Labor Day, so if you wanna have.
We just wanna make sure that we're being specific on the amendment.
Count of Kirkland, you need a permit.
Okay, so, no, we, just one second, because I'm not.
Well, well, when we're drafting this, we'll use the sections of the bylaw so that it's specific, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Three, yeah, actually, three one A B, yeah, it's written right here.
Three one eight.
Remove the D, get a permit.
Three one, I went to seven.
Yeah, three one A B here.
Thank you.
Okay, so you want three one A B to be removed?
Yeah, remove and get a permit.
And substituted with
Get a permit.
all users, all purchasers to obtain a permit?
No, all users, if you want, like, I mean, nothing prohibits you from going to buy them in Timmins, but if you wanna set them off in the town of Kirkland Lake, this is where the town of Kirkland Lake has it. The fire department will have control, it's over what goes off in Kirkland Lake, okay, so you need a permit, you can buy them wherever you want.
So do we have a second or on that amendment? Counselor Owens will say, Owen will second.
We can only speak to this amendment.
Yes, so now we're speaking to the amendment, which was proposed, which was instead of designating certain dates that it's three hundred and sixty five days a year with permit. Does anyone have anything to say about that issue?
So you have to, do, sorry, yeah, procedurally, yes, you have to allow Counselor Owens to speak to the amendment and the second or to speak.
Oh, so it's just the same, okay, Counselor Owens.
Okay, we'll have to cross out, yeah.
Yes, so you, as the mover of the amendment, should speak upon the matter.
Thank you for talking, I actually be fine, I mean, look, we're.
You'll have to go back to that after you.
Okay, then for now, that's.
Okay, so you're just gonna speak to the amendment as presented?
Yeah, so I think it's, it, it regulates, it, it, it it covers everybody, and it puts the fire department, he's that, you know what, if your fireworks are going off, they'll be aware of it. The, there'll be paperwork, and they know when they're going off, and it's, it's just matter for the all.
Okay, Counselor Owens, a second or of the amendment, you can speak to the matter.
Yeah, I think, uh, they do present as danger, and requiring a permit, uh, does allow the, the fire department to enforce the rules and, uh, it increases the overall safety for the whole community, so it's a good thing.
Anything further from members of council on the amendment? Okay, I will call.
I'll read it for the being in the motion. Yes, so amendment number one, uh, moved by Counselor Owen, seconded by Counselor Owen, uh, that the bylaw as amended and presented be amended to remove language specifically leaked at three point one B and substitute with all users are to obtain a permit.
Okay, on the amendment, all in favor? Opposed and unnoted, the amendment is carried unanimously. Second, daring amendments, Counselor Shaba?
Yes, to you, Madam Chair, so, uh, Chief, I just have three questions regarding this bylaw, I, I think you have a you have a copy there, okay, so, uh, maybe I should start from the bottom, but my page here, item seven eleven. So what is the difference between a permit and a written authorization by the fire chief? Is that analogous to a permit, or it's just at seven point eleven? And the, if you read that paragraph, the last two sentences, uh, the last one, I guess, second to last, uh, without first obtained written authorization?
So if it's.
Yeah, I'm confused with that one, sorry.
Through you, um, Madam Mary, um, if it is the municipality hiring a contractor to do the display fireworks, we give written permission to them.
Okay.
But if it's a private contractor, they have to do a permit. That would be the difference, okay, whether it's the municipality actually hosting the function or a private organization hosting the function.
So, uh, just based, so if I go to item number six, so, uh, this is no personal charges, but discharge any firecrackers is charging prohibited fireworks. Discharge release of light lantern, so I know some of these stores they're not selling prohibited fireworks, and what are prohibited fireworks, more than twenty five K G at those point?
Through you, Madam, so, um, fireworks is the they can be anywhere from an eighth inch by an inch long, that's just, they explode up to a half inch by three inches long. Um, and the same thing, they just explode, but the, the problem is, we don't sell them in Ontario, but they're readily available as across the border. Yeah, so that's why we're just putting that prohibited.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further from members of council? As per procedure, are there any other amendments to what has been presented?
Okay, oh, just for clarification, if our chief, through Madam Mayor, if our chief pointed out a paragraph, can you elaborate on that paragraph if the implication changed now?
Through you, Madam Mary, um, so paragraph five one four, if I speak to Counselor Owen, uh, his route was about the seven day prior to and post of the two holidays. Don't need to be amended or removed.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Yes, Counselor Owens.
Yeah, through you, worship, uh, forgive me, I'm, my mind is other places. Um, so I would like that paragraph removed, I'm not sure how I do that in form of a motion. Or amendment.
Yes.
Which was the section?
Five point four.
Five point four, yeah.
So just for clarification, you're asking for an amend?
An amendment, and, and the amendment is that paragraph removed from the bylaw. And.
Okay, so we have a second or for that? Counselor Dykens, what second, but that you moved. As the mover, do you wish to speak about the amendment?
Well, I think I would just go by it.
Yes.
Quite waste of my time.
Counselor Dykens, as the second or, do you wish to speak to that amendment?
I agree with Counselor Owen.
Perfect. Any other council member have any points regarding that amendment? Okay, I will have the reading of the amendment.
Moved by Counselor Owen, seconded by, uh, Counselor Dolly Dykens, uh, that the bylaw be amended to remove subsection five point one point four as presented.
All in favor on that amendment? Any opposed? The amendment carried.
Um, yes, Counselor. Um, to you, to the clerk, so this is all in order, five point one, five, five, one, six, does it just all get moved up, or you just, okay?
Through you, Madam Mary, all council, yes, I have to rename one of the sections, uh, as the movements have happened. Thank you.
Okay, so now we can return to the matter at hand with the amendments.
Amendments are dealt with, now, the question needs to be posed
of the original.
Of the originals, yes.
Do we?
Counsel, they won't be able to read it.
Yes, so do we require the reading of the original question? Okay, so I will call for yeah, I will call for a vote on the matter. All in favor? Opposed? Carry the amendments. So, thank you for your patience, sir, thank you for answering all of our questions, we do appreciate your time. Item number seven point three supplemental request for land use authorization and exemption to noise bylaw. May I have a mover? Counselor Owen, a second or Owens, thank you. Welcome, Alan Smith, C A O, who will speak to this matter? Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay, I know.
This is a work in progress, we're gonna start with the reading of the motion.
Thank you, uh, moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Pete Owens, be resolved that report number twenty twenty four C A O B R seven identified as supplemental a re- request for land use authorization and exemption to noise bylaw, equal eagle minds limited, you receive. And that council hereby received the amending noise exemption request from an equal eagle minds limited received by the town on August eighth, twenty twenty four, surrounding their full, full drilling exploration project. And by the council hereby agrees to amend its July sixteen, twenty twenty four decision to grant a sixteen month noise exemption to an eighteen month noise exemption to noise bylaws oh seven sixty five to an equally an equal eagle minds limited pursuant to the terms and conditions as outlined in the report, council, twenty twenty four, E B twenty twenty two.
Thank you, Madam Court. But, Mr. C A O?
Uh, Madam, Madam Mayor, to members of the council, uh, right, as July sixteenth meeting, council authorized the execution of an easement agreement with an equally old mines limited uh, for six hundred hours departure drive to support the mine's full, full drilling explosion project. This is for an eighteen month timeframe, uh, and that council also granted a sixteen month exemption to noise bylaw zero seven. This is for an eighteen month timeframe, uh, and that council also granted a sixteen month exemption to noise by law zero seven thousand six five. However, a legal would now want to have that noise exemption claimed to eighteen months from sixteen months. To coincide with the eighteen month timeline of the right of access agreement, as it is possible. That the drilling or the construction noise might be present at the site for the entirety of the access agreement. Eighteen months, so we're just looking for an extension of two months and which is a championship reputation as, right? Thank you.
Any comments or questions from council members? None noted? Does anybody require the rereading of her question? Okay, I'll call for a vote, all in favor. Opposed, not noted, item carried unanimous, thank you. Item number seven point four operational key performance indicators update twenty twenty-four quarter two may have a mover. Counselor Ranger, seconder. Counselor Kylie. Madam Clerk.
Moved by counselor Janice Ranger, seconded by counselor Dr. Kylie, be resolved at report number twenty twenty-four, A B M fifteen. Confetti of operational key performance indicators, O K P I's, update twenty twenty-four quarter two be received.
Thank you, well now welcome Stephanie Dell, a strategic initiative and workplace performance coordinator, thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, three Madam Mayor, members of council, um, tonight we are presenting the quarter two O K P I's or operational performance indicator report. Um, and there's just a couple things I want to mention, new to the report and the attachment is the placement of the supporting information that used to be. In the reports of council and now I as you'll see in attachment one, it's accompanying the data and the graphs in there. And I do want to mention a statistic that I found really interesting. That kind of demonstrates the impact that our facilities and things we offer, um, have on surrounding municipalities and other communities, um. The aquatic center within the complex was the host of over ten schools, including some from Ruwan Intimacy and Chores for their, uh, so people will be your entrance. So you will see that that's also supportive in attacking one. And department directors are here, if there's any specific questions or further insights or clarification for any of the the information or the data.
Thank you, any questions from council, counselor Owens?
Through you, Madam Mayor, uh, there's two questions, the first, I I think it's probably just a typo for volunteer response activity for June. Auto depend calls on page. Fourteen in the report, uh, zero average response for June. I'm assuming that's not shouldn't be the right number.
I will ask the fire chief to come in, join as he can speak directly to us.
Through you, Madam, yes, correct, that is, um, just an error, okay. Shouldn't have been a zero. Um, my other question, through you, Madam Mayor, is concerning the airport. We look at even flights. At one point, does this council start asking the question at the end? Getting the ball rolling on. What do we do with this facility for June fourteen, and I get there's the drag rate, so that kind of excuse the numbers, but April twenty-three flights. Uh, sorry, May twenty-three flights, April fourteen flights again. Counselor Ranger did ask that question to get numbers, we have, hmm, my knowledge, we haven't received those answers yet.
Um, the C A O will speak to that.
Uh, to Madam Mayor, to question the council on. The question that the equation that was requested by council agents will actually get the, uh, user fee, council vote in the budget. That the, I've indicated, we have the numbers in there, however, I. I'm aware of the concerns that are raised, uh, with some of these numbers, and this is something that, uh, that we will be looking into, uh, because you're raised.
Counselor Ranger, I'm sorry.
Through you, Madam Mayor, um, I think that us getting these key performance indicators will give us some. Documentation to support whatever hard decisions we may have going forward. Uh, when it comes to the airport, my question is also for the finance director, um, if you could come forward, I just. Want to get your thoughts on, um, for the K P I for, um. Back taxes, um, do you feel that? We're getting into a better position or we're sort of stagnant as far as where we've been, uh, prior to this year, can you give us your thoughts?
Yeah, you, Madam Mayor, all of council, Chief Ranger, um, I call it stagnant, static. To try and create a slightly different tone, um, I, as I mentioned during the budget deliberations. You know, we have one full-time person working on these tax collections. A lot of their time right now is being absorbed by the tax sale process and getting the the next range of billings out, so we've done one, we have a second one coming immediately. So if you're asking me, do we have, we have a plan? But I'm not expecting it to drastically change, we just don't have enough. Bodies or time to to do the, uh, well, it's quite labor intensive to. You know, sending out letters, uh, some people respond to that when they get the red letter. Um, but in reality, as people who are delinquent. Just toss it to the side and without that follow-up, with the phone call. Maybe a little bit more, you know, uh, one of the problems we're actually running into, which is very time intensive to correct is a lot of the contact information we have is bad. We have old phone numbers and that's uncommon right now, because lots of people move to cell phones from having home phones. And they just, we don't hear, you know, get the change, so we're phoning deadlines, uh, email addresses. Sure you've all seen it, people change their email address almost as often as. You know, they they change their banks. Um, bank banking information can change too, so anyways, there's a, there's an awful lot of admin that goes on in the background just to make one phone call for one delinquent account. And and, uh, I won't lie by saying right on top of it, we're struggling with the load of having this many accounts. Really, I'm putting an awful lot of, uh. Hope I'll call it. In the, in the tax sale process, the tax sale itself will probably not generate an awful lot of, um. Proceeds, although we did just do one agreement. Mostly because until they get to the very end, nobody particularly takes it seriously. Uh, when we get to the end, the ones that are on the list will either deal with it or we'll have a bunch of properties to make some decisions about. But I think the real value in this round is. Kind of giving a signal to the community that, you know, we're not looking the other way anymore, we live in a much healthier community than we used to. And a lot of these delinquent accounts, I think, are leftovers from, uh, an old way of thinking that, you know. Don't care, town's not coming after us because my property is worth nothing, well, that's not our reality. So the second round will be a little bit more pointed towards the accounts we know we can recover on. Um, but it's it's, the first round is really a message, and we're hoping that gives us some weight. Um, but I won't lie by saying we're we're on the phone all the time, you know, the tax collector spends an awful lot of time just getting the admin part done.
Thank you. Any follow-ups, counselor Shavon?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor, um, I'd like to, um. You to look at page nine, uh, this Dell, um, the permits. The, um, the permits in review. Uh, do we have, uh, uh, let me know if those are new bills, because there's nothing about new bill, new new bills here. For me anyway, so would there be, uh, part of this permitting review or? Is it some, is is it embedded somewhere or there's not?
Run up the chairs.
Yeah.
The director.
Yes. Yes, okay.
Through you, Madam Mayor, uh, to council Shavon, rest of council, um, permits in review is a, is a, is a blanket of how many permits, that could be anything from a fence permit. To a new residential build. We had residential build on our O K P I's in the past, but because we haven't seen substantial amounts of. Of new residential builds, um, it was, it was. Kind of a a decision internally that we showed what is being done elsewhere, because there is a lot of. Education that we've done this year, um, as earlier in the meeting, uh, counselor Owen pointed out, education on. Why you're pulling a permit, you need a permit when, we pulled those infographics, they've been very effective, and as you can see, our permits are going up. We are seeing an increase on maybe some smaller permits like fences. Um, and and small entrance ways and and stairs and such, so. I think putting it, um, all permits in review shows what action is coming down the pipes, those are permits that. Could be, uh, four and a half million dollar building, that could be a permit of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it could also be a permit of. Uh, seventy-five to two hundred and fifty dollars for a small. Built, I think once we get into the point where we are seeing larger residential additions, we will be placing that in the K P I's because I think it'll be important. To show, uh, not only residents but council, um, the residential growth that's being added to the community and homes being added.
Yeah, just a follow-up, yes, please, so, um, that takes me to building revenue, which has. A jump from twenty thousand in April to two seventy-two thousand and twenty. Something, and this is the, and then, so all construction value means the money that was sent to. Ministry of Corporate Assessment, so again, this number two seven two thousand, that that's just part of those permits and all of that.
That's right, so when you're filling out a permit, oh, through you, Madam Mayor, uh, when you're filling out a permit. The total construction cost addition to that permit is then sent. To the ministry so that they can account for the assessment value increases, uh, in the community through fires.
So finally, Madam, uh, Chair, the, under the property standards infractions, I see the violations gone from nine to thirteen. So it's good to have those, but do we get anything to. Uh, indicate that some of these violations have been somehow resolved or not resolved, you know, I don't know. But is there any any way, something that? If you share with us, okay, we got thirteen violation, but we're able to advocate for resolved five or six or something like that.
For sure, through you, Madam Mayor, uh. We've been very through the education that some of you may have seen through social media about clean yards and property standards and. And the process that we're taking, uh, kind of like Lloyd says, uh, uh, we're not, we're not turning a blind eye to it anymore. Uh, as most of you are aware, we've seen great impact in beautification and property standards of of recent. Um, they do take time. And we do find ourselves having to balance enforcement versus working with a homeowner to rectify issues. So to say that we've had a lot of success, yes, can that be?
Quantified.
Quantified, not yet, I think as a community whole, uh, there has been a shift. And I I'm starting to hear that quite frequently, so that's positive.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor Owen.
Yeah, through you, your worship, uh, to the treasurer and possibly the C A O. Uh, in terms of the tax department, we used to have a tax collector and an assistant tax collector, now we just have one person in that department. What I'm hearing today is that we're not making significant progress in collecting back taxes and that the workload is there. To support. Additional staff and. My question is, if we're really going to make significant. Um, progress in collecting these back taxes, have we considered going back to a tax collector and an assistant tax collector?
Though we appreciate the the question, um. It isn't germane to the. Body of of the report, I think it is noted by staff and C A O, um, because it has been spoken about several times. And I think what you brought up is valid, but it may not, um, warrant a answer at this moment. Staff can get back to you in the future regarding that matter.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything further from members of council regarding O K I, O K P I's? Anything further about K P I's? Okay, do we need the motion reread? Thank you, everyone, no, okay, so we can, um. Have the, uh, vote at this time, uh, the question as presented, all in favor?
Sure.
Opposed, none noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number seven point five food cycler pilot program update, and I have a mover, counselor Dykens, seconder, counselor Owen. The reading of the motion, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, moved by counselor Dolly Dykens, seconded by counselor Rick Owen, be resolved, their report number point one, W seven, entitled food cycler. Uh, registered trade one private program update be received.
Uh, chief administrator officer Alan Smith will be speaking to this matter.
You, Madam Mayor, Madam Council. At the November seventh, twenty twenty-three council meeting, uh, council approved entering of the partnership agreement, the food cycle science science corporation for the purchase of. A hundred and nine food cycler units. Inventory included a hundred units for residential use and nine units for the local school participation. Up to date, sixty-one. S C thirty units have been sold, these are the smaller units, with five units remaining. Thirty-three units of the E C O five have been sold, these are the larger units. With one unit remaining for residents and nine allocated with schools. Considering both units together, we have fifteen left in our inventory. We have recently increased the marketing of these remaining units. Now there is an option to return the unsold units, however, given the small number left. The ones that remain unsold over time could be incorporated for useful use like incentivization campaigns or changes in programs or well initiatives, et cetera. Again, however, we will continue to market the old unsold units, uh, for the year. And as you have to, we can use it for useful use, but it's only a small amount left, so, uh, we're just going to keep them. In inventory till we sell or.
Before I open the, um, floor to comments or questions, I just want to. Uh, reiterate how successful this program was to know that ninety-four of a hundred. Units that were allocated for the public versus the nine for school, um, were actually purchased, that's probably one of the most successful initiatives the Channel Kirkland Lake has put on in quite a long time. Um, that is an incredible uptick in usage and, um, I just want to congratulate staff on that, I think their education and and, um, their pushing of this program is really successful. Any comments or questions from staff? Oh, sorry, from council? Nothing noted, um, do we require the reading of the question again? Doesn't appear so, all in favor? Opposed, not noted, item carried unanimous, thank you, sir, for the report, item number seven point six quarterly municipal accommodation tax update, mover. Counselor Owen, seconder, counselor Ranger. Reading of the question of motion.
Moved by counselor Rick Owen, seconded by counselor Janice Rangers, be resolved at report number twenty twenty-four, D E V twenty-four, entitled quarterly municipal accommodations tax. Tax update be received for information.
Okay, you may proceed, um, we're going to have Dan Lever, your director of development and enterprise services, speak to that, this matter.
Correct, uh, through you, Madam Mayor, to council. Um, so before you have the, uh, quarter two municipal accommodations tax. Uh, updates, uh, as promised, you'll be receiving it, uh, every quarter. Uh, at the end of quarter two, we have billed a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars, fifty-four cents. And, um, have collected subsequently one fourteen, one seventy-two, eighty. Um, there's been no, no further changes to the program, uh, takeaways from quarter one, council comments. Um, was to keep education flowing, uh, and our department is working diligently with, uh, other short-term accommodation. Uh, that are not registered currently, and we continue to, uh, to do that, um. There are some changes in short-term accommodations reservation systems that give us a little bit more information in regard to addresses. Um, or vicinity some addresses, um, so we will, uh, we will be, uh, actioning those, um, but happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Shavon?
Yeah, thank you, to you, I'm going to be your, um, director, uh. You indicated, uh, we bill one twenty-seven thousand. Uh, so have we already collected a hundred and fourteen? Any reason for that, uh, people are just following behind or?
Through you, Madam Mayor, uh, to couns- to councillor Shaba, uh. It 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 has happened, we've had some late fees attached to some of the, of the billing. Uh, but they have until the end of the next month, um, to, to do that, so. From when this report was written, we may have already collected that amount of money. Um, but, yeah, we've, we've definitely had some, some late charges, but I must say for the most part, um, everyone has been quite cooperative.
Uh, follow up, uh, you did indicate that there's some, uh, people, uh, some establishment that not really sign up to the man. Um, you have numbers, percentage, because the, the more we, they wait out, you know, we're losing money, right? So, uh, a few establishments, are they collecting, not sending, or they're not even bother collecting at all, or they do register with the, uh, with the municipality?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor, uh, it's a mix of both, um. A- a- anyone that's registering on a short-term accommodation website like Virgo or Airbnb, they can take their, their ad on and off at different times. So it's really hard to quantify what missed revenue is sitting there because the fact that maybe they vacation elsewhere in other times of the year and they could put their home on Airbnb through that time. So catching that could be, can be difficult. Uh, but we're trying to, uh, get a good solid number on the amount of people that are still not signed up that are longstanding, I would say. Uh, and that would give us a better idea, but our, majority of our major uh, players are registered and contributing.
Thank you.
Anything further? I just do wanna commend, um, staff on it, it's actually exceeded what I thought the compliance would be. I think the fact that we began with kind of an honor system of, of people and businesses coming forward um, and being willing to to do this voluntarily, because in the end, all businesses will benefit from the monies that are collected, um, and it has exceeded what we had projected. And I think, um, in the future, we're really gonna see the benefits as far as economic development and tourism are concerned, so. It's just as a community, we're doing very, very well and I, and I cannot wait to see what that, those funds turn into in the future, so thank you for that. Do we require the reading of the question? No, okay, all in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you again, sir. Item number eight is considerations and notice of motions. There are none this evening. Are we doing the same for bylaws? Item number nine is introduction reading and consideration of bylaws, number nine point one, bylaw number two-four dash oh-six-four. And I have a mover, councillor Dykens, secondary councillor Shaba, with the reading of the bylaw.
Certainly moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor John Shaba. Be resolved with the following bylaw, be read numbered pass, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Clerk and the sales corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-four sixty-four being a bylaw to amend the zone with bylaw number twenty-one thirty-two. To resume certain lands from an institution applied zone to a residential medium density special exemption, R two, full term zone. Thirty-nine seconds, three weeks, vote.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, nine point two, bylaw number twenty-four dash oh-five-seven, mover. Councillor Owens, secondary councillor Owen.
No.
We have to bring back our amendments, uh, through you, Madam Mayor.
Yep, I will turn to the court. So through you, Madam Mayor, to all council, for the peace as council, I can identify the amendments that were brought from the item under commu- uh, items under staff, uh, or, sorry, communications from staff, um. I did note that when, um, the first request was to remove item three point one B and substitute it with the all fireworks users are to obtain a permit. It doesn't fall well in there because that section says no person shall. So my recommendation would be for the amendment to be a new item two point two, where it says all fireworks, and then the first, um, recital is no person. No person shall sell or offer for sale, buy or offer to buy any fireworks except as described in this bylaw, and then a new item two point two would be all fireworks users are to obtain a permit. And then you would remove completely item three point one B and subsection five-one-four. So in the motion as presented to council, it would read as amended by adding subsection two-two, reading all fireworks users are to obtain, are to obtain a permit, close quotes. And by removing subsections three point one B and subsection five point one four.
Okay. So can we, does that, do you both?
Yeah. Yeah, so it
Okay, so, so, perfect. As the way things just worked out, it's you and
Yes.
Councillor Owen, and you guys were the ones that did the aman- amendment. Is there any comments or questions? So, yes.
Moved by councillor, um, Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be resolved with the following bylaw, as amended by adding subsection two-two, open quotes, all fireworks users are to obtain a permit, close quotes, and by removing subsections three point one B and subsections five point one four. Be read numbered pass, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Clerk and the sale of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-four fifty-seven, being a bylaw to regulate the sale and discharge of fireworks within the jurisdiction of the Town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number nine point three, bylaw number twenty-four dash oh-six-five, may have a mover. Councillor Ranger, seconded by councillor Kylie. Madam Clerk?
Certainly moved by councillor Dennis Ranger, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie, be resolved with the following bylaw, be read numbered pass, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Clerk and the sale of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-four sixty-five, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of documents in connection to a lease agreement over a portion of six hundred Archer Drive, and equal evil, and equal evil minds.
Uh, any questions or comments? None noted. All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, item nine point four, bylaws number twenty-four dash zero-zero-six, may have a mover. Councillor Dykens, secondary councillor Owen, Madam Clerk?
Certainly moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, sec- seconded by councillor Rick Owen, be resolved with the following bylaw, be read numbered pass. Signed by the Mayor of Municipal Clerk and the sale of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-four sixty-six, being a bylaw authorizing the execution of a contribution agreement with His Majesty the King and Royal of Ontario as represented by the Minister of Transportation for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Connecting Link Project Title Sixty-Six.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number nine point five, bylaw number twenty-four dash oh-six-seven, may have a mover. Councillor Owen, secondary councillor Kylie. Madam Clerk?
Certainly moved by councillor, uh, Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie, be resolved with the following bylaw. Be read numbered pass, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Clerk and the sale of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-four sixty-seven, being a bylaw authorizing the execution of an agreement with Miller paving limited for certain paving services as identified in five-nine-eight twenty-three R F T.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted. Item number nine point six, bylaw number twenty-four dash oh-six-eight. May have a mover. Councillor Owen, may have a seconder councillor Ranger. Madam Clerk?
Certainly moved by councillor Rick Owen, sec- seconded by councillor Dennis Ranger, be resolved with the following bylaw, be read numbered pass, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Clerk and the sale of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty-four sixty-eight, being a bylaw authorizing the execution of an agreement with Miller paving limited for resurfacing and pedestrian cross over construction on Highway sixty-six as identified in six oh one four R F T.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Item number ten, questions from council. Two staff there were, were unsubmitted prior to this meeting. Item number eleven, notices of motion, councillor Owens.
Keep it just simple for now, uh, parking issues downtown.
Well, yeah. Anything further? Nothing noted. Item number twelve, councillors' reports, any updates from members of council? Councillor Owen?
Yes, through you, your worship. I, uh, recently attended a, uh, information gathering session that was held Salvation Army, it was put on uh, by D SAB. Um, currently uh, D SAB is undertaking a, uh, they've hired a consultant to come up with a plan to end homelessness in the district. And, uh, as part of that, they advertised this session, uh, overall, different types of media. Uh, the consultant is, uh, I would say, unique and probably very well suited for this type of job because um, the interaction will also be with some unique people during the process. Uh, one of the interesting things, and I'm glad it was noted during, during, uh, the discussions, is that homelessness in Kirkland Lake and homelessness in Timasming Shores, uh, are somewhat different. Okay? Uh, in Kirkland Lake, for instance, there is no encampment of homeless people. It tends to be more hidden, more coast surfing. Uh, where in Timasming Shores, there's one or possibly two encampments. So all this will be like they'll be taking into account all the different, um, things. Um, also, uh, they kept mentioning community, 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 and I said, well, if you're gonna talk about community, don't you think you should be presenting to the local councils? And the consultant said that he would be, if we requested, he would be willing to virtually make a presentation to council, and I, I think it's something that, uh, we should consider down the road, um, when, uh, the timing is correct for the consultant and us because um, uh, we, we have an obligation to all people in Kirkland Lake, not just the people that have houses and so it was, it was very informative and, uh, I, I'm optimistic that some realistic, uh, recommendations are gonna come out to tackle this problem, which is huge right across Canada. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Anything further from members of council? Um, I really didn't prepare anything, which is unlikely. Um, I guarantee that I, I was doing work in the last month. I do only want to note that we've had the pleasure, uh, our community has had the pleasure of welcoming two federal level leaders. Not M T's, not M P P's, like actual leaders of the political parties they represent. This is massive for Kirkland Lake. To my knowledge, having two federal leaders make stops in our community is unprecedented. It just simply has not happened in the past. And it does speak to Kirkland Lake's forward movement. We are seeing positive things in our community. We see positive things on the news, we see positive feedback from other political leaders. Um, from our contemporaries across the municipality, across province. Um, people are recognizing that Kirkland Lake or Kirkland Lake is a mover and shaker once more. So, um, it just speaks to the community as a whole. And I wanna thank those members of the, the community that supported those leaders coming to see us. And regardless of politics, it is massive to know that your community has welcomed federal level leaders, that's all of Canada level leaders to our community, that's massive. So I just wanted to make note of that. Madam Clerk, do you have, uh, sorry, um, mover? Councillor Owen, secondary. Councillor Ranger. Madam Clerk?
Certainly moved by councillor, uh, Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Dennis Ranger. Be resolved with the verbal updates and members of council be received.
Um, yeah, all in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. And additional information this evening includes the proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake acknowledges the harm and hardship caused by drug poisoning overdose. Drug addiction is a chronic disease characterized by compulsive or difficult to control drug use despite the harmful consequences. And whereas Recognizing Overdose Awareness Day sends a strong message to the former and current substance users, namely that they are valued and that overdose death is preventable. And whereas the town recognizes the purpose of International Overdose Awareness Day is to raise awareness of drug overdoses, reduce the stigma of a drug-related death, and to acknowledge the grief felt by families and friends remembering those who have died or have had permanent injury as a result of drug overdose. And whereas for every drug overdose that results in deaths, there are more non-fatal overdoses, each taking an emotional and economic toll on the individuals, their families, and the community. And whereas everyone has a responsibility in reducing the toll of drug poisoning in the Timasming District, which has claimed the lives of more than nine residents last year, together with the countless more affected forever. And whereas the town urges all citizens district-wide to learn about this disease and to help support those who are affected by it. And whereas the people affected by overdose are family members, neighbors, community members, and local citizens deserving of our love, our compassion, and our support. Now therefore, I, Stacey White, Mayor of the Town of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, as International Overdose Awareness Day in the Town of Kirkland Lake. Councillor Ranger, secondary councillor Kylie.
Moved by councillor Dennis Ranger, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie, be resolved with council sanction proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day, August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and the town.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Fast performance, we need to go. Okay, we're convening after our recess. Sorry, um. Do I have a mover? No. Dykens, seconded by councillor Ranger. Madam Clerk?
Certainly moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Dennis Ranger. Be resolved with council adjournment in time pursuant to section two-thirty-nine-two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended. To discuss litigation or potential evasion, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local boards. Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for non-purpose and a position by procedure criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board at six-twenty-one P M for the following reason, item thirteen point one, insurance and legal update.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Okay, we shall now rise from in camera. Uh, may a mover? Councillor Dykens, seconded by councillor Owen.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen, be resolved with council reconvene in open session at seven oh nine P M.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Just before we move forward, there is a note that I should have made at the end of the proclamation, even though the, um, awareness day is technically or officially on the thirty-first of August. There is actually an event occurring on Thursday, August twenty-ninth, Thursday at three P M at the Tobern site. Um, thank you to councillor Dykens for reminding me that we should point that out. So moving forward, um, item number fifteen, matters from closed session, there are none. Item number sixteen, confirmation bylaw, bylaw number twenty-four dash oh-six-nine, may have a mover, councillor Ranger, secondary. Councillor Owens.
Moved by councillor Dennis Ranger, seconded by councillor Casey, Casey Owens, sorry. Be resolved with the following bylaw, be read numbered pass, signed by the Mayor of Municipal Clerk and the sale of the corporation be affixed thereto, bylaw number twenty-four sixty-nine. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceeding of council at its meeting held Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous, item number seventeen, adjournment, may have a mover, councillor Shaba, secondary councillor Dykens.
Uh, moved by councillor Shaba, seconded by councillor Alan Dykens, be resolved with this meeting of council to now return at seven oh one P M.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous, thank you, everyone.